The invocation will be given by Pastor William Quinn of Trinity Presbyterian Church. And if I can ask you to please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for today. Thank you for this glorious day. May it let us rejoice and be glad in it. Thank you for blessing us with such abundance in this community and guide us to be good stewards of that abundance. Guide us to be good citizens with very little part that you have given us to be responsible for. Guide our city council and their decisions and all the responsibilities that they have. And we also ask that you guide our police force and our public workforce that guide them in safety as they go about doing the job that we ask them to do.
Yes.
All these things, we pray in your son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance through the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor Quinn. Appreciate it.
Thank Pastor Quinn.
Okay, couple of items. We have an amendment to item 10 requested by Mr. Ladd. That was to exceed, to increase the not to exceed project cost from $70,350 to $75,350 for thermoplastic cross well striping. Can I get a motion to amend agenda item 10?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to increase that cost from $70,350 to $75,350.
Second. Got a second?
Yes, second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of amending the item, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, that's been amended. Next, I would like to entertain to amend the agenda to add agenda item number 21, and this was to approve the award of the request for quotes for labor and materials for the replacement of the pump at well number eight to Griner Drilling Service Incorporated for the low bid not to exceed cost of $54,793.74. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, that will be item number 21. All right, back to number one. This would be to approve the amendments of the June 23 regular city council meeting and the work session also held on June 23. You have any additions, deletions, or changes to those minutes?
Make a motion when you approve the minutes as submitted.
Submit a second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, those minutes are approved. Thank you, council. Mayor Sullivan, your report, please.
Just a few things. First and foremost, I want to thank everybody for a great July 4 celebration. I know that seems like it was a long time ago, but it was only 10 days ago. But really want to thank Paige and her team for, you know, putting that event on, the ball and pops for being there to play. Obviously, the fire department's always down there making sure that we have a safe event, the police department also. Also want to thank Public Works, Richard Johnson, everybody who was involved in getting that, the circle back open at the pier. It was a hard press for the last couple of weeks to make sure we got that open so everybody could enjoy the 4th of July down there. And so just really want to thank them for all their effort. Specifically, David Chapman with Roland Construction, who's the contractor. He worked really hard, was down there, you know, all the time, just making sure everything was taken care of, and really appreciate all that effort. Also, just wanted to talk about the street construction that's going on on Section Street. Obviously, most of the people in this room probably know that that is a Forest Main is tying in the last of the lift stations related to the Restore Project. And so we do hope to have that project complete by the opening of school, which will be August the, right, August the 11th. It opens on the 12th, but the 11th is when we're planning to be done with that project. Again, I know it's inconvenient and apologize to everybody for that, but want to remind everybody to please be respectful as you're following those detours through the residential areas. Make sure you're following the speed limits. I know the police chief has had patrol out on close patrol in a lot of those areas, but really, you know, want to remind people just to be respectful of those neighborhoods. Also, the roundabout, that construction's going well. It's actually running a little bit ahead of schedule, which you hate to say because inevitably there could be something that happens that, you know, throws a monkey wrench in that, but it is going really well. We do hope to, you know, finish ahead of schedule on that and again, get Section Street open back up. You will notice on that Forest Main project, there is some work to be done further south on Section Street towards Twin Beach, so that will, that will take place after this initial phase finishes. And we're also finishing up some paving throughout town and downtown, specifically Blaindey and Johnson this week will be paved on Wednesday and Thursday. So they've notified all the businesses, walked and knocked on all the doors last week to let everybody know that. So a lot going on in town. And again, we try to get a lot of this construction done before school starts, so appreciate everybody's patience on that. And I'd also like to give the chief just a few minutes to talk about a few promotions.
Mayor, thank you for splitting your time with me. Also, want to thank the mayor council for allowing us the opportunity to recognize our officers this evening. So tonight, I'd like to take a moment and to highlight two members of our department who were recently promoted. Both have consistently demonstrated exceptional dedication, strong skill sets, and clear leadership potential. So first, these guys love the spotlight. So the first officer I would like to recognize is Corporal Dustin Holmes. So Dustin, if you'll come forward. So Corporal Holmes has been with us, with our department for seven years. He's been serving in the patrol division. He's a certified drug recognition expert, a longstanding member of the special response team, and he also serves as a field training officer for the department. In his new role as a patrol corporal, he will step into a supervisory position, helping lead a team and manage daily patrol operations. Congratulations. Don't forget, don't forget your name. Is that it? Oh, that's your work. Yeah, that's your name.
Okay.
But that's it. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. Your dad's still not here? Okay. Okay, well, we'll go ahead. So the next officer I'd like to recognize is Sergeant Tyler Sellers. Sergeant Sellers has served with our department for 10 years. During that time, he has worked in the patrol division as both an officer and a corporal. He also serves as one of our traffic homicide investigators and a field training officer. In his new role, he will serve as a sergeant in our investigative unit where he will oversee daily operations and work closely with our team of investigators. Congratulations. And this one does have your name on it.
I can recognize my name.
So if y'all would, please join me in both congratulating both of these officers for the outstanding work that they do. Thank y'all very much. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, chief. Just one more thing. I did want to remind everybody, if you do want to get updates on that utility work that's being done, there is a dedicated page on our website that people can go to. We're also posting that to social media, but we know that people don't always have social media, so you can get that update on our website if you just want to follow the progress. Thank you.
Is that all, Mayor? Okay, thank you. All right, next item on tonight's agenda is public participation for agenda items only. That would be items six through now 21. Item five is a public hearing and you'll be able to speak on that when we get to that item. So if you'd like to address the council on items six through 21, come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. I will remind everyone that we will have another opportunity at the conclusion of tonight's meeting to address the council for any items that are not on tonight's agenda. So items six through 21. Okay, seeing no one. Oh, just getting your wallet, huh? All right, I'll close public participation and we'll move to council comments. Councilman Martin?
Well, I guess I'll just piggyback on, I actually took my family down to their celebration on 4th of July, and I tell you, that was really good. They had a 3D action that they had with the fireworks. I don't think I've ever seen that before. It felt like the fireworks was coming into my lap. I think our money was well spent, even though we're capping at $40,000.
I think that was a surgery, I think that was a surgery you had on your eye that did 3D effect now. Most people, it's usually 3D.
Yeah, it felt like 3D to me, man, that's for sure. Yeah, that's all I have, though. Enjoyed it. Great job, guys.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo that. I thought the 4th of July festivities were fantastic. Thanks to Paige, all the city staff who helped make that happen. Great job to Roland for getting the parking circle open. That was wonderful. And the other project I'm really excited about is the Flying Creek Nature Preserve. And what is the ETA on that, what do you think, right now?
So we sent a tentative date earlier today to the council for opening the first phase of that, but it, we plan to hopefully get that done mid-August.
Mid-August.
We'll open the first phase.
Mid-August.
Lots of good stuff happening.
Yes, lots of good stuff.
Thank you.
That's it.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes, I will again say how wonderful the fireworks were. You guys do, always do such a great job, city staff, Paige. It's always great, and it was packed. I mean, the bluff was filled to capacity. But I also want to take a moment and recognize a group of eight-year-old Fairhope ball players that will be leaving in the next week to go compete in the Cal Ripken Eight-Year-Old Regional Tournament in Monroe, Louisiana. These kids have played fantastic all summer. They won their state championship, which is very tough to do in the eight-year-old division. And so I'm really excited for them. So if you see those kids practicing, you see them out and about, I think they actually leave in two days. So if you get the chance to run into some of those kids, tell them good luck and go represent Fairhope well, because I know they will.
Did any other teams win state championships recently?
They did, they did.
I'd like to hear about that.
There was a 12-year-old state champion, also coached by yours truly, and, but we don't do anything until the World Series on August the 6th in Branson, Missouri. So we got a little more time to talk about them.
Thank you. Well, you guys have all hit it. I mean, the July 4 celebration was great. Jimmy, I don't know what time you got there that day before to put a blanket down, but thank you for letting me take a couple of feet, because it was a pretty good spot you had right there. Anyway, it was wonderful. Thank you, Paige, and your department, and public safety, everybody that was involved in that. Fire department, thank you, guys. All right. With that, I'll close council comments, and we will move, we will skip item five for right now, and we will go on to item six, which is a resolution that city council hereby declares Sherri Sullivan duly elected to the office of mayor of the City of Fairhope for the term of office commencing on the first Monday in November 2025, and shall issue a certificate of election to her for the office of mayor pursuant to the provisions of section 11-46-26 as amended. If you want to read the entire resolution, council, it's on page 36 of your council book, and the certificate of election is presented on page 37.
I will, I will happily make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item seven is a resolution that the City of Fairhope authorizes the mayor to use the remaining $5,000 from the $30,000 community development grants for the signage needed for several parts of its working waterfront and green space project. And as the mayor pointed out, this is the community grants that we get from Energy Southeast every year.
Still moved. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item makes a resolution, the City of Fairhope approves the award of the request for quotes for labor and materials for signs for the Fairhope Pier Area to image 360 for a not-to-exceed amount of $3,916, and to modern signs for a not-to-exceed amount of $11,770, and authorize treasurer to transfer $15,686 from the general fund to the federal grants fund.
Motion to approve?
Second. Have a motion in a second. I will just make sure that I state that the $5,000 additional is already included in those quotes, so, so you know that's not going to be an additional expense. All right, motion in a second. Yep. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, ayes have it. Thank you. Item nine is a resolution, the City of Fairhope approves the annual procurement of tulip bulbs, hyacinths, and other winter flowers for FY 2026 for the landscaping department to, and I may butcher this, rug rock flower bulbs with a cost of $37,876.88 plus shipping cost. The cost will be included in the FY 2026 budget. Procurement is in agreement as allowed pursuant to resolution number 1650-10 adopted in May 24, 2010 with designated like item floor exceeding the $30,000 state bid limit. And we have to get this, kind of like the garbage truck, we have to get the flower bulbs ordered early.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve?
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 10 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope approves the award of the request for quotes for labor and materials for the thermoplastic crosswork striping in city school zones and other zones to Impact Divisions LLC for a not-to-exceed project cost of $75,350. This Public Works project will be less than $100,000 and therefore does not need to be formally bid out. And if you're coming in a little later, we amended that $70,000 to $75,350 prior to the start of the meeting. So, and I also added the language in there and others, because it'll be more than just the school area.
I make a motion to approve as amended.
Okay, okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number 11 is a resolution, the city council approves the contract amendment number two for pest control annual contract with Wayne's Pest Control Services with an additional not-to-exceed amount of $99. Yes, you heard that right. And authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute the contract amendment, the new contract total with a not-to-exceed annual amount of $13,568.68.
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number 12 is a resolution to award a bid to Johnson Controls for a chiller replacement at the Fairhope Public Library with a bid proposal not to exceed $34,603. I will state that this is a budgeted item and the bid did come in slightly under budget. Entertain a motion to award.
Will you approve as presented?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the bid or award the bid. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, thank you, council. Motion carries. Item 13 is a resolution, the city council approves the selection by Mayor Sherri Sullivan for professional construction, engineering, and inspection services for the Bond Secure Grant Drainage Project to Sawgrass Consulting, and hereby authorizes Mayor Sullivan to negotiate the not-to-exceed fee to be approved by the council. Entertain a motion to approve this election?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. And as Richard and Ben told us in the work session, items 13, 14, and 15 are all related. We have a motion in a second. Any further? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving this election, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 14 is a resolution to award a bid to C Thornton Incorporated for Bond Secure at Grand Street Drainage Repair Project with a bid proposal not to exceed $398,945.50, and authorize the treasurer to transfer set amount from the general fund to Capital Projects Fund.
Make a motion, will you approve as presented?
Second.
Have a motion in two seconds. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 15 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope approves the award of the request for quotes for labor, equipment, and materials for the underground bore project at the unopened right-of-way of Bond Secure at Along Boring for a not-to-exceed project cost of $89,800. This Public Works project will be less than $100,000 and therefore does not need to be formally bid out. As Mr. Johnson told us in the work session, I think there are four runs, four four-inch runs of 800 feet each, and then the electric department will run the wiring and make the connections. I'll entertain a motion, okay?
Still moved.
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the award for the request for quotes. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 16 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of an additional six annual subscriptions of CitizenServe software for the IT Department from Online Solutions LLC and authorizes procurement allowed by the Code of Alabama. The additional annual cost is $9,000, and the new total annual cost will be $51,000. Jeff told us it would bring the total now to 34 licenses. Entertain a motion to approve the purchase.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Does the number of total licenses have, I'm looking for Jeff if he's in here. I don't, I guess he's still here. I was just wondering if it, does the number of licenses is based on how many people can use it simultaneously, or how many, what your volume is?
That's assigned to each user. And like Jeff said, we've got people in every department now using Citizen Serve.
Okay. So, okay, so this is for the internally used, okay, I'm with you.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 17 is a resolution, the city council hereby approves and authorizes the City of Fairhope to execute a memorandum of understanding between Coastal Alabama Community College and the City of Fairhope Police Department pursuant to section 36-21-49 of the Code of Alabama. This is something that we approve every year.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 18 is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan was hereby authorized to execute change order number four for the return of scanned documents for the planning and zoning department. The services have been previously negotiated through the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance Buying Group with MCCI LLC, and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. This is change order number four and is a not-to-exceed amount of $2,500. The total contract price will now be a not-to-exceed $113,193.48. Entertain a motion to authorize the change order?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And this was discussed earlier in the work session. Any further comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number 19 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope hereby authorizes the resubmission of a grant application for FY 2025 Airport Improvement Program funds for the runway strengthening at HL Sunny Callahan Airport, and authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to sign the application and any related forms or documents on behalf of the City of Fairhope. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute an appropriate grant agreement with the FAA without further action on the part of the city council. We talked about this earlier in the work session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Item number 20 is an application for a special events retail license by Thomas Bratton McGregor of Bottles Up Mobile Incorporated. Doing business as Bottles Up Mobile at the Fairhope Civic Center, July 25 event at, here, right at 161 North Section Street in Fairhope. And I believe the chief said everything is in order for this license?
Still moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second to approve the application? Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the application, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 21 was added to the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. This was a recommendation from Daryl Moorefield, Water Superintendent, following the pump breakdown at well number eight. And this resolution, I'll just read this, says that the City of Fairhope approves the award of the request for quotes for labor and materials for the replacement of the well number eight pump to Griner Drilling Service Incorporated for a project cost not to exceed $54,793.74. This Public Works project will be less than $100,000 and therefore does not need to be formally bid out. And I want to say, if you weren't here earlier, we do get additional quotes. So we did get three quotes. Just because we didn't have a formal bid process doesn't mean that we didn't get multiple quotes. Entertain a motion to pass?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the award. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Got to look at my watch.
Six minutes.
We've got five minutes.
Five minutes.
Yep.
Do you public participation?
Well, we could do public participation now, yeah. So if you have anything else to bring forth before the council, other than item five, if you'll come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
To ask questions? Is that what you're asking?
Dan?
May I?
Yes, sir. Yeah, just state your name and address for the record.
My name's Renee Bhutan. I live at 10950 Driver Court in Fairhope. Couple of things. I was looking at my utility bills. I'll start off. I have a couple of questions. questions. My utility bills have increased by 65% over the last four years. In the same period of time, inflation was 15%. It's possible that mine, because I maybe use more water, but I was comparing apples to apples, how much it was per thousand gallons. I just have a hard time believing that I'm paying a 65% increase in four years. The other thing is, I looked at the City of Fairhope's budget, and in 2021, water and sewage, their budget was 14,400, or 14 million, excuse me, 468,000. In 2025, that same budget is now 63,233, 63,233,000. It's a 437% increase. I just totally befuddled when I see increases like that, it doesn't make sense. The other thing, and I do thank Corey, he looked into something. The website for the city utilities, there's no transparency, period, or there's very little. They refer you to Google on questions. Google, not their website, Google. You go to Google and then they, the only thing that answers is AI. If you ask that same question 10 times and just change the verbiage around a little so it meant the same thing, you could get nine or 10 different answers. Okay, I just don't know why there isn't transparency on this. I tried to find how much the revenues were for water and sewage, or for the utility department, can't find it. I have, I know how much they're spending, but we are citizens, we do pay taxes, and we have a right to see it. Corey went there and talked to him, and he probably could shed a little knowledge on it, and I'm very appreciative, Corey, of that.
Yeah, but we did find it, there's a study out there, Mr. Renee, it's, you have to go to utilities, and then you have to go to department, and then that study from 2022, the wastewater sewer study, is out there. The mayor and I found it together. So, those numbers are out there for previous numbers in that study.
I hit search, are you saying it was for every year, you found it 22, 23, 24, and 25?
No, I did not, no, 23, 24, 25 is not, but 22 and 18, I believe, is 18.
Well, that's not transparency. Just skip years.
The rate study.
The cost of service study.
Cost of service. Pardon me?
The cost of service study, but if you wanted the financials for all those years, if you just go to our webpage under Treasury, all the financials are there, you can see all the revenues.
Well, I got the budgets, but I didn't see the amount of money.
The financials are there.
All right.
The audit, the audit report is what you're looking for, basically.
Well, anybody can go to the website and phrase questions there, and they'll see what, and I showed Corey, not maybe, not possibly, not sometimes, way too many times it says, "See Google." That's a hell of a way to raise, it should be transparent, it really should be. Most of us wouldn't know what department, where to go, or something like that, to be referred to Google is not doing us a favor. The other thing, I'm just curious, is the moratorium going to be extended on building?
We'll see, you know, we're working on our building regulations, we're working on our codes and see if we're in a spot that we could lift it, but there may be some other, you know, items in that, in the new code that might slow it down.
You know, I did a little research on that, maybe I misunderstood Mayor Sullivan, but I didn't know you had other moratoriums, but so, I guess you had others, but this, the truth of the matter is, the Supreme Court's ruled, you guys can put moratoriums, not maybe, not possibly, go to Lake Tahoe, see what happened there, and you'll see the Supreme Court ruled on it, if there was anything detrimental to more building, and the biggest thing they had there was that it was spoiling the lake, okay? I'm not saying that's, but you can, and it's, I mean, this is a town, we don't want a city. You know, most of us don't want a city, we want a town, you know?
Well, I want to address your question about the tens of millions of dollars in expenses for the water department. The reason it's gone up from 14 to 63 is, we've got to have more water, and we've increased our capacity, very, very soon it will have increased by 55% from 9 million gallons a day to 14 million gallons a day, and it costs a lot of money to drill wells and put in water towers and pump that water miles and miles to get to the city.
Sounds like good grounds for another moratorium when the builders. It sounds like great grounds.
We have one in place right now due to that.
But that's going to expire, from what I understand.
Well, I can't sit here, and I don't have a crystal ball, and I can't speak for these gentlemen, but.
Well, but what we can tell you is, moratoriums are legal, but only temporary moratoriums are legal in Alabama.
Tahoe did it for 32 months.
The laws in Alabama are very different than the laws in Tahoe. Our laws allow six, nine, and 12-month moratoriums, temporary, and even those can be challenged if you can't show certain benchmarks are being met during that temporary moratorium.
And that supersedes the Supreme Court of the United States?
It doesn't supersede anything, it just sets the standard for what we have to follow.
Well, but what I'm saying is, if the Supreme Court ruled that it's legal, that's for the whole country, that's not just for one.
They are, sure, they are legal, but how long you can put them into place changes, there's nothing that says you can do them indefinitely, it just says you can do them.
Do we run a risk of a water shortage this year, with it's pretty hot out there and we're not getting much rain?
No, we're doing good. We've been tracking pretty good right now, due to those tens of millions of dollars that have been spent, and due to the fact that we've gone from nine to, say, 11 and a half million, and we're about to hit the 14 million gallon a day mark, so we should be just fine.
And we have more wells.
Borrowing some, borrowing some, I mean, you know, equipment breaks, I mean, you know, it's a pump broken, we've got to replace a pump, you know, but it's temporary.
And off the issue, as far as what you folks are doing, you're doing a great job, but a moratorium, wouldn't it be wonderful, though, if you guys could expand the thoughts about building, the builders, developers? If somebody has a 100-acre farm and they want to sell it, great, you could sell it in five-acre lots, and there's ways that you could get them over the hump financially, by buying one acre now, and when it sells, the city gets that money, in the meantime, they got that money, is, you know, because they can't sell their land, and I'm thinking over on Lawrence Avenue, there was the problem there. But that could be, whether it be three-acre lots, five-acre lots, and actually, it's not going to hurt the builders, they'll build nicer homes, we're not a poor area, people can afford a three or five-acre lot, so it would be better for everybody, nobody loses, everybody wins, and we don't have, you know, these problems that we're certainly looking down the barrel.
Trust me, we talk about all of these, we talk about density constantly, how to control the density, how to control the population, and we have a strong, we're in a strong property rights state as well, and if it's zoned for a certain use, the only way it gets rezoned is if the owner of that property asked to be rezoned.
Well, if you sold, bought one of his acres, you know, one of his lots, I lived in Colorado, I had to buy a 35-acre lot or more, and I had to buy, so I bought a 52-acre lot. I had no choice, it had to be 35 acres or more, or I couldn't build a home, period, perfectly legal, checked with the attorneys, and I wasn't upset about it either, you know, but it was perfectly legal, and that damn thing I could do, just don't buy the property if you don't like.
We could have this conversation for hours and hours and hours, but what you're pointing out, though, is something that we face, and we face this in this city for decades, is that all the developable property is in the county, and up until recently, it was not zoned. And we dealt with, okay, we'll build what we want in the county, or we'll try to annex into the city, and you can control it to a degree, or we'll just build what we want. We dealt with that for 40 years. It's all on the fringes, so if you talk about 35 acres or 50 acres, it's all county land. And now, they took it away from our planning jurisdiction, they took it. The state law changed.
Lawrence Avenue is the, I guess, the division of city limits, and, and the county, or? All right, well.
I'm telling you.
Well, the truth of the matter is, my bills don't show that I'm, they're city, I'm getting city billing, but I was told Lawrence.
That's because you're getting city utilities, you're paying city taxes.
Utilities, right.
You're paying city property taxes.
Right, okay, so I meant the utilities, okay. Well, I just think if, and I think you could all put yourself into position, I got 100 acres I want to sell, I need the money, I can't farm it, I don't want to farm it, but I need the money. Great, we'll buy a five-acre lot from you, tide you over for a year or two, and you could just turn around, sell, and buy another one from them. I mean, there are solutions to everything, so.
Agreed.
All right, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you, Renee.
Okay, anyone else? Thing else you want to bring forth before the council? Six o'clock?
No, five.
Okay. All right, I'll close public participation, and we'll go to item number five. This is a public hearing for a grant FY 26, out dot section 5310. This is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan has authorized to execute filing award application in or into an agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation for aid in the financing of a section 5310 transportation assistance project if awarded. And by state law, we're obligated to have a public hearing on this. Okay, Paige?
Yes, correct. So, last year, we did come to y'all for approval to move forward with this grant application for this particular grant, for the Knicks, excuse me, for our senior transportation needs for our seniors with disabilities, and again, it is housed out of the James P. Nick Center, but any Fairhope citizen is able and willing to use this within our community. So, the bus that we did receive back in 2012, or, excuse me, we applied for this grant in 2012, the bus is a 2014. So, we do have a current bus in use, however, we are, you know, year after year having a lot of maintenance issues with this. So, we've decided to go ahead and come before y'all, to go ahead and get on the list for this grant opportunity. Again, it's housed out of the Nick Center, but of course, transportation is for everyone citywide. This, again, like you were saying, Mr. Burrell, is part of the application requirement, so we do have to have a public hearing, we did miss that public hearing last year, so I do believe in y'all's package, y'all can see the options for those buses. We came to you last time with a bit of a change from what our previous bus was, just from utilizing the bus every single day, we found that our needs have kind of changed a little bit, as far as what we would like to apply for. I will say, the bus is ours, actually, free and clear, we do, this particular bus, after seven years, was, we did receive the title and is now in ownership of the city, so I don't, we aren't, Kim and I were just talking about this, who is our senior services manager. I do believe that still is in effect, we believe that, so after, I believe it's seven years, we would be able to have that transferred over to us, that title. The particular bus that we were looking at was budgeted at about $160,000, it is going to be in that FY 26 budget with an 80/20, so that we are looking at about a $32,000 commitment from the city.
I was trying to find the calculator on my iPad, and I didn't want to pull my phone out, and you guys think I was texting somebody in the meeting, but I noticed on your tabulation, you're showing 33,600, and on the, well, on our, the short version of the resolution, it says 32,600. I want to make sure we put in the right amount.
It's probably from me rounding numbers.
Let me just pull out my phone.
Yeah, it's me rounding numbers, they want rounded numbers on the application, so I think the total, the bus, I just took the number of the bus. It's probably a 33,000 is what our portion.
32,605.
Yeah.
So, it would be the 32,6, and not the 33,6, then?
Yeah. It's my rounding error.
Deadline for the application is, for us to turn in the application is the end of this month, so July 31st. So, if y'all have any questions, Nicole is here, as well as Kim Rowland, who, again, is our Nick Center Senior Services Manager, who, we do have a part-timer that manages this at about 19 hours a week, transporting our seniors to and from. It could be the post office, it could be to activities at the Nick Center, it could be to doctor's appointments, grocery store visits, you name it, we are, we're there, and it's a very active program that we do utilize, so, again, here to answer, any questions y'all have?
Yeah. I remember when we bought that bus years and years ago, it served us well.
Now, this one's going to be upgraded, I think we're going to have a lift on this one, I believe, we talked about that.
The current one does have a lift, so this one's lower, it doesn't have a stair accessibility, so the one we currently have, some of our, I'd say, like, not in handicap, I mean, not non-handicapped, our wheelchair, our non-wheelchair seniors are going to have to go up flights of stairs to be able to enter into the bus, this one, they'll be having like a zero entry, like walk into the bus.
Okay, good, that's what matters, okay.
Which is a lot easier for them, because the current steps we have are very steep, so a lot of them need assistance just to walk up the stairs, especially with groceries in hand, whatever it may be.
Got it, perfect. And you'll see that full resolution on page 24, and it actually doesn't reference the amount, it kind of leaves it, leaves it to, you have a little leeway if you decided to go with a different option, right? Yeah, don't forget my math, didn't matter. All right, all right, we will open the public hearing, if somebody would like to come speak to this item, this transportation, you come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Just because it's a public hearing, I'm going to speak. Sherri Sullivan, 419 Barclay Avenue, Fairhope. I was actually working at the senior center in 2012 when we purchased the first van, and it's this grant program, it was a 5309 or 5310 program from the state of Alabama, and that was one of the, I guess, programs probably that I'm most proud of, that was implemented at the senior center. It really provides a great service for people in Fairhope who do not have the mobility to get around, or have the means of getting around. We have BRATS, which is a service of the county, but sometimes, they're not always where people need them to be, because you have to call and schedule that 24 hours in advance, and this is just a great program that allows these seniors to have some camaraderie, they might go to, he might pick folks up to go to dinner altogether, they may go to the grocery store, to the pharmacy, those kind of things, so there's some set trips, and then if there's time, they can do some demand response. It's also really great for people who have mental health issues, maybe they're stuck inside, they don't have family here, he, you know, when they're out, sometimes they'll take a ride around the duck pond, just because these are folks who may not see anybody else but this driver. We used to use it to deliver homebound meals, which we don't, but again, this may be the only person they see all week if they live here and don't have any family, so it's a great program, not only for the service it provides, but for just the mental health that it provides to, for our citizens here in town. Thank you.
Anyone else for public hearing? Okay, if not, I will close the public hearing, and council, I'll ask you for a motion to file the application. Do we have a second? Is that a second? Yeah, okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all of them favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. All right, that's all for tonight's agenda, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Still moved.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. All right, we're adjourned, thank you, council.